Who's upstairs, who's where?
Get your ass down here, boy.
They always start to know.
Hey.
We can't give wage and all this other stuff because of this money that they bring in for building and funding. So, they've always had.
Yeah.
A lot of them were here. And right now, the stimulus one that just went through about a year and a half ago, they should have.
Why go write that off, fix that up, ready though?
What?
They drive three.
Are they?
All of them.
They will?
Yeah.
You sure?
Positive.
Just talking to Don.
Look out the window and turn and say it's a clock.
We just walked through it.
You what now?
All kids are on my jury.
I'm gonna ask about it still, making sure.
Yeah, well, I had that too. I've been there.
But he thought it went to five minutes.
He said the public hearing is at five.
We'll check it though, make sure that I didn't. But I hit the recording and it was going, so.
I told him. You have to, you have to fix it.
Cause it was already, I seen it powered up.
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
I don't know, yeah. Go on.
I'll take a bell.
Whatever.
Or something like that, so.
They probably use it all like that.
Hi, honey.
No, no, he was just putting that out there for a number. He's like, you know, whatever number it is.
Am I ready?
Yeah.
Call me in order.
Oh, I knew they'd be here.
Roll call, please.
Jane?
Present.
Aaron?
Here.
Bill Bill?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Um, Joe? Um, Mayor is here, and me. Okay.
Moving on with.
Public hearing, you need to open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments, and then close it.
Open the public hearings, are any comments?
No.
Hear none? Closed.
Okay. That takes care of that. Um, now we can move on to the next part.
Move on to your part.
No. My part. Um, let's see.
Let me, let me ask a quick question as far as on the, the budget. There's a memo that was put up that was important to slow down spending.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of the items are in red.
They are. Majorly in the red.
Why?
Because, okay.
As far as different, spending too much.
No, because you guys wouldn't let us correct the riverboat budgets and spend out of there, and we did this whole other thing, or you guys did, someone did, and it screwed up all the numbers, and I've got many, many line items in the red. And that's why. And that's why we can't, we're not, we're having trouble balancing and reconciling. Exactly.
And explain to me why. Why couldn't you?
You guys wouldn't let us write checks out of the riverboat monies like we were supposed to because I didn't do an ordinance with them, which I admitted I didn't do an ordinance. And you said, oh, no, you wanted to do it, and you let Mr., Nick Cowan, Mr. Reedy, take stuff out of general. And then they fixed it, but it's still not right.
So, the money never got transferred back? It was supposed to be transferred back?
No, the money was, the money went back.
Well, then that, then that, then that shouldn't be a reason why we went in the red if the money was transferred back.
Well, that and the fact that we've done more spending in six months than we do.
Well, then don't say it was our fault.
No, because part of it is the reason, what he talks about, Jane. Part of it is still the reason of moving that money out of general.
But it seems like we're getting blamed for everything because the budget wasn't done properly.
And my question.
I took, I took the blame for not doing the budgets right. At the time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for raising my voice, but we did move the money back, right? The money was put back.
That's it should've been.
So.
But see, we haven't reconciled July, so I don't know, when we get that reconciled, I'm not sure how much will still be in the red.
So, if we went in the red, it's not because of anything we did, it's because the departments overspent.
Okay, part of it is, yeah. I don't know, I won't know until we reconcile July.
Jackie, on, is Umba, if I'm saying their name right?
Umba.
Are they still helping?
Of course.
Can, can they help you all as far as in getting that done?
Well, yeah, but then I have.
Cause I know you all have daily stuff that goes on as well.
Yeah, they can. He, he emailed me today and said he will help in whatever way I need him to. I just haven't done it because the girls were working on it. He just sent me a bill today for seventy-five hundred dollars for work before today.
Okay.
Move along.
Well, the only thing I had on the agenda tonight was to amend the 2012 salary ordinance and add positions and change salaries to what you want them to be, or what they can be. And until, until you guys amend this, nothing's gonna change. And I gave, I did three of them so that you all have your choice. As I explained in my letter, there are three of them. The first one is includes the police in their raises. The second one takes the police off. And the third one takes the police and the mayor's secretary. But according to the State Board of Accounts, the mayor can give his secretary a raise. And I don't have to amend the salary ordinance, per Charlie Pride.
Per Charlie Pride?
Yes.
He told me the mayor could give a raise to the secretary as long as the council made appropriation for it.
Well, he didn't tell me that.
That's what he told me.
Okay.
We'll check into that.
Yeah, I, you know. Um, so then therefore, the, the one to approve would be eighteen, which has Grant's salary, Human Resources, Clark and his assistant, and the building inspector and the construction inspector. And did you read how I changed the boards? Is that what you wanted?
Well, that's, I mean, how they're getting paid.
Well, no, it's just so much a meeting or a maximum of so many, so many hundred dollars times the members.
Cause I mean, the ordinance eighteen dash two thousand and one, I don't have an issue with it. I'm just saying it says a hundred dollars a meeting.
It's, I know, it's, this is the one eighteen two thousand.
But I'm saying.
Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, okay.
We also got an ordinance that says.
Yeah, okay.
We've got conflict in ordinances, remember, we talked about that?
Major ones.
Because it says when they're setting up these meetings, they'll be paid a salary, but then that one says for me.
It's always said.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't have an issue with ordinance eighteen dash.
Decide what you want, I don't, we need, we need to drop one of them.
I agree.
Well, they've always, it's always been, to the best of my knowledge, that I've, since I've been here, it's always been so much a meeting times so many meetings. It's never been salaried.
But sometimes they have special meetings too, Jackie.
I know, okay.
You don't pay.
And you don't pay special.
No.
Well, can we, can you prepare new ordinance to change our existing ordinance?
It's also come to my attention, though, that I think the state statute says if you have a lucrative, if you hold a lucrative position with the city, such as a council person, you don't get paid for those.
Uh, well, me and you had a discussion, the only one I found is redevelopment.
What's that?
That you don't get paid.
Right.
If you have another position, right?
If you hold a lucrative position.
Cause I've never accepted pay for that.
That's in the, that's in the statute which establishes redevelopment issues. Well, yeah, I can do whatever you guys wanna do on the thing, I can do another, what you need to do is probably revoke one of the ordinances or, you know.
Well, and what we can do is if you want, and you wanna.
Leave one in and take one out.
You wanna approve eighteen.
Well, can we just take that one?
I can take the board out tonight on this one, cause it's just the mayor's signature, he can do it tomorrow.
That has nothing to do with this tonight.
That's just, that's just the mayor, that's Grant and Jennifer and Mike and John John and Carl and, and, um, what's his name, Mario, who weren't on the last one.
But we passed one earlier in the year that added those.
Well, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Honey, I don't remember yesterday.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, I'll have to look.
When all those contracts were.
That added, that added Carl and them? I don't remember adding Jenny.
When they redid the contract. When the contracts was done.
Okay.
He's right, he's right.
Okay, ah, you know.
Because I brought it to the attention about the fifty-five thousand on.
Okay, yeah.
So, there's, there's an ordinance that's already been passed.
There's no need to do this.
No.
And I say we should stay with the... There's one thing that concerns me, and that's the engineering and zoning assistant at seventeen dollars and thirty cents an hour. He's not even up to labor or clerical wage.
He's not up to labor wage. When we took him in the union, he went to labor wage.
So, this isn't right on here then?
Oh, okay.
He, he, he paying back, is it?
I don't know.
But he's accepted the union, he has to be paid labor pay.
He should be, he should be labor pay? I'll have to check. John Johnson.
Can I just make a motion that we stick with ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand eleven?
Yeah. That's the old one.
That's the existing one.
That's the existing one.
In discussion?
Um, because we've already okayed the other three people, Carl, Grant, and Jenny.
Jenny, I'll, I'll check that.
We're good with them on their salaries, right, Mayor?
Yeah, that's what Mike said, now look.
All, all five of them?
Well, I'll.
Yeah, it was all five of them that ordered.
I'll, I'll find it.
And the Johnson boy, all they gotta do, you're gonna have to pay him back pay from the time he went in the union.
Okay.
So, that's, he goes on, he's on the union contract. That's, I forget what it is, twenty?
And then we gotta make the decision to either be salary or per meeting. I think we should stay with the... On that one, Jackie, that you gave me, the original one had a hundred dollars per meeting.
Well, I had budgeted a hundred dollars and I put that in the ordinance, but we never paid a hundred, we only paid seventy-five, because nobody came and said, hey, that's a good idea, let's raise it. We had talked about raising it at one point. No one ever did, and I was budgeting it in case they came and said, yes, we need to give them more money. And so, I, that's what I was changing on this one ordinance, was putting it back down to seventy-five.
Well, I think if it was already originally in the one that was the original, and that's what we're putting a motion on, we oughta just leave it there.
Well, the only thing is, if you look at eighteen dash two thousand and eleven that was put in front of me tonight, it says seventy-five dollars per meeting.
But the original one doesn't, because I got it right here in my pocket.
The other one says a hundred dollars.
Says a hundred.
Something's been changed.
Says, oh, yeah, like.
Someone, well, I mean, I'm just saying.
I don't know.
Just leave it a hundred, why change it?
So, if we're gonna approve the original, this is the original.
Yeah, cause, well, cause I have this ordinance.
This one says a hundred dollars on it?
Yeah, but this one with the same number says seventy-five.
Yeah.
This one, the original one that I got, says one hundred.
What's the number on it?
Ordinance number eighteen, two thousand and eleven, but you said it was for two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, it is. I don't know what I've done, folks, because I have typed up so many ordinances for you people, I have no clue. I know what it says, but I, you know, then I cha, I cha, probably changed it to make it what you wanted it to be.
Put two twelve on there for me, then that's what.
Sure. But see, if you look, it's right there.
Yeah, she just put it there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I say if he's gonna make a motion to leave it the same, we leave it the same, cause we got the other guy's cover, right?
I'm gonna bring them up.
That's what Mike says. I'll have to check.
Are we gonna?
We got motion still on the floor.
No, no.
Okay.
I get a discussion.
Sorry.
So, as far as the, everything's good except for the police and fire, are the police, are they getting raises or not?
Well, if we stick with the old salary ordinance from two thousand and eleven, they're not getting raises.
And the other thing is, is Mayor's secretary's not on this other one either, I don't think. On the other one.
She's on there, but just not with the raise.
Right, she's clerical, I think.
I think so. No, she's probably under, wait a minute.
I am allowed to give merit raises, though.
To everybody but police and fire.
Anybody else, right.
Hmm, I'm looking.
Are they not gonna get raises at all, or?
No, these were other raises besides what the salary ordinance, um...
I'm saying if we're going back to the two thousand and eleven.
But that's just for right now. I'm gonna do a new salary ordinance for next year for, with the budget.
For the remainder of this year.
No, for next year.
Well, no, I'm saying this would stand it for the remainder.
For her remainder of this year, cause they're gonna try to cut her. That's what they're up to.
Up to what?
Trying to cut her salary.
Who's? We ain't trying to cut her. We wanna pay her right here, what does ordinance say? But I'm allowed to give merit raises. Well, we're gonna find out, hopefully.
But the question is, is where is the money coming from for the mayor, as far as appropriation? Is what we're asking.
That's what, what, uh, Mike said, he talked to Charlie Pride, and Charlie said you can give the raises as long as council approves appropriation, is that right?
There has to be appropriation approved.
To find, for where the money's gonna come from. You know.
You're not gonna appropriate the money for us, what I'm getting.
Not right now.
Then she's gonna file a grievance. Good, we'll fight it. Fight that union.
Good for you.
So, what about, so we're not gonna give the police a raise?
Not at this time, for next year, yes.
Are they be, are they being paid that right now, though, that raise?
Yeah.
They'll have to pay it back, but they've got paid already, I think.
They understand that.
Yeah, they do understand that.
And I told you that, Mike.
Yeah, sure, everybody will pay it back.
Yeah, but until you guys do something, you know, with an ordinance.
Well, we just did.
I know, I know, but I meant, I meant, that's what I was saying, until you guys do something, then nothing's gonna change. Um, you know, you, we just did, you're right.
Right, but I mean, this ordinance has always been in effect.
Yeah.
This year.
What was the comment you just made, Mayor?
I tweeted me a mob attorney.
I made a motion.
Yeah, we've got a motion to stick with salary ordinance eighteen dash two thousand and eleven, which is for two thousand and twelve. You wanna call for a second?
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Jane?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Wait a minute. Bill Bill?
No.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Doug, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeses have it. This is Grant's, too. Okay, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
That was all I wanted.
Is there any more business to do, Doug? It's all along the agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Ask it.
About Fall Fest and the rides for the kids?
Ask it.
Um, are they gonna ride for free?
You show up tonight, you'll find out.
Can I get a yes or no?
Sure, and I'd you find out.
Oh, I don't know.
But I talked to Marie earlier, and she said they wasn't. So, I'm, I'm asking what the problem was.
They're getting free.
But what was the problem earlier? Cause she told me that you overrode and said they wasn't gonna ride for free.
No, I didn't override any.
Well, that's what she said.
Well, he said, her said, or anything else said. They're riding for free.
Yeah, I, I told you, I'm like, I spoke to, um, Marie maybe two hours ago or so, and the majority of the executive committee, and she said all kids are gonna ride for free, even out of town kids.
Did she tell you the mayor overrode?
She didn't, she didn't tell me who, who overrode anything, but she's.
What are you trying to get at, Mike?
I'm trying to get it, she, she told me today that you overrode and said they wasn't gonna ride for free.
No, I did not.
Wasn't there something?
I know it was against kids riding for free.
Wasn't there something that happened yesterday with the rides that you?
We had to do some adjustments.
Adjustments, okay.
Everybody's riding for free.
That's what I heard.
Is that what you wanted?
That, that's what I made the motion out of.
But that's what's been done.
Okay.
That's what we voted on, though.
I know, I spoke to Marie two weeks ago, and she said that Lawrenceburg kids were riding for free, and I talked to Mike earlier today about this, and she talked to Connie Canoe, so I don't know what happened between that two-week period, but two weeks, two weeks ago, Lawrenceburg kids are riding for free, and today, every kid's riding for free, so.
We can't control that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, at the meeting, the minutes I gave you.
Yeah.
There was some discussion, I didn't put all the little stuff in the minutes, discussion about how you could determine who was local and who wasn't.
Yeah, I knew that was an issue.
There was no easy way.
Yeah, I, I knew that was an issue before.
So, you know, that was kind of where it stood.
Some people don't understand that.
Wow.
I got it.
Well, you know.
Any more?
Just for, uh, just for information, I went over, uh, the principal called down, showed me the school, school gym, and showed me around, and he said, just pass, I want anyone to visit through the meeting, we'll be there on weekends, if, uh, you guys need to on weekends, so, anytime.
Do you recommend going?
I would go and look at it.
They want thirty-four million dollars out of you.
Uh, I got, um, there's a lot of federal and state grants out there for, uh, school improvements.
We, we give them seven hundred thousand dollars a year, besides what they're getting from the tax base. I think that, what is it, seventy-three cents every tax dollar goes to schools. They don't wanna go to referendum, what it is, they wanna try to take the money, ask, keep them going back to the taxpayers, what should go, let them vote, and see if they want school. That's what should go.
Uh, I just know that there's a lot of federal and state grant money out there for school improvements, and I think they need to go in that direction.
I agree, they, they want this board to foot thirty-four million dollars.
We don't have thirty-four million dollars.
I'll tell you another little story, too, that happened about five, six years ago. We offered to retire the.
School debt.
Two, two million dollars a year, that loan, that construction loan for the middle school, as long as they would agree to use it for that and nothing only, and they wouldn't do that.
I remember that, Mr. Votol.
That's true.
I remember that.
Well, what was the, cause there was.
And then the other thing is, they wanted, they wanted you all to put, not you all, the council.
Seventeen million dollars.
To put fifteen or seventeen million dollars in perpetuity, or, and that led the school to use the interest forever, which didn't make a lot of sense.
Well, wasn't there a loan forgiven to the school, like one point seven, what was that for?
That was early on, about nineteen, or two thousand and five, I think, as you were on the council.
Don't remember.
I don't remember, I don't pay no.
But, yeah, we forgave.
It was like a million or so.
The worst thing is, we offered to give them two million a year, and they wouldn't, if they agreed to.
So, it wasn't construction for the school then?
I don't, I think it was something else.
I don't know much of it, but I don't think it really was.
We also gave them money for raises.
We did.
Yeah, so they could pay their teachers more.
Yeah, I remember that, so, cause I got a raise that year.
It's not like this city hasn't helped take care of it.
Well, no, the city, the city contributes to the after prom, the Cinderella program, any, anything that the school has, the baseball, the, I forget what sports, well, we just put a thing in the sports program.
Tiger Pride.
Tiger Pride, uh, the, we, now, this year we didn't because no one asked. We usually give money to each class for their, um, uh, homecoming floats, you know.
I still think, though, they should go back to, on a referendum, and let the taxpayers choose what they wanna do.
It's hard to decide themselves, I don't know.
I think, I mean, it's definitely something to see, I mean, gym.
But they should have a building, you know, the gymnasium is in sad shape, and it's gonna have to be moved.
That's all I looked at.
But they also addressed one thing to me, too, and I know some of yous didn't grow up in this town, but they wanna move the football field, and they wanna tear the three-story original structure down. Guys, I'm telling you, if you do that, they're gonna run you out of town.
I'm telling you one thing, I worked in that building for twenty-two years. That front structure with four floors, as they call it now, four, three, two, and one, but back in the day when I went to high school, it was three, two, one, and basement, is a solid structure.
Yesterday, you couldn't build it.
You couldn't build something as good as that is, and they also spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars of ripping out walls because of mold exposure, and redo, redid the mortar and the whole front of the brick building. If you destroy that original structure compared to the buildings they're building now, like they built GMS and LPS, those buildings will never have a lifetime.
Well, I don't understand why they're just gonna build a separate gymnasium, and then when it's done, rehab where the old gym is for extra classes and stuff.
I mentioned that to them, Mike, but they wanna move the football field and all this stuff. They want a brand-new school.
They want all this.
Sounds like they got a problem.
Well, I think they should, too.
They need to deal with it.
I've talked to a couple.
The gymnasium have to do something, cause the gymnasium's tilting. What's happening, the pilings underneath, the aquifer's on about fifteen foot, and it's sinking, and it's, it's, it's in bad shape. They're, they're monitoring how much it moves all the time, too.
But if they want an entire new school, that's something they need to deal with, I think.
Three of the taxpayers oughta choose that.
And GMS is not that old of a building, and I wish you'd walk through it and take a look at the condition.
They've got a building fund, I don't know how much is in it.
It's not been maintained, it's not been taken care of properly, and why build buildings if you can't keep them up?
Well, I told you the other day, I was over there, you know, my boy and, and stuff, and I couldn't believe they didn't paint the walls and stuff over the summer, it was just, it was terrible.
Well, I, their budgets, I think they use the places they shouldn't be. I'm, I'm all for the education with the kids and everything, but you got, if you don't I'm, I'm all for the education with the kids and everything, but you got, if you don't have a nice school to bring them to, it's falling down, and you got problems there, too.
Mm-hmm.
And that's neglect, that's all it is. Right? I might, I hope you guys think about this, because it needs to go back to the taxpayers.
I'm working on those numbers for you.
Yeah. Yeah, she's getting some numbers together, what we've done in the past, and how much we've given them.
But I will go over and walk through the gym.
It's worth a look.
Yeah, you ought to go look. But if you look at it, Bill Bill, a lot of like Jane said, it's neglect, they haven't kept it up.
About one wall, that, uh, would be the wall, it's, it's separating the building.
The bad thing is, the gymnasium, the new one they built...
That was built sixty-three.
Yeah, sixty-three. Aquifer's about fifteen foot down from the pilings. What's happening, it's sinking like quicksand, and it's tilting the building, is what it is. Basically, things are rockfall, they've been monitored, it moves a little bit at a time, they got a scope going. They're going to have to do something with that, that's, that's, that's a must.
But to tear down that front structure, that four solid floors would be a grave mistake.
I'm totally against it.
You can't build a building like that today that'll withstand as many years as that one has, and will probably still be good for another hundred or two hundred years.
Probably ever been right, too. I'm against moving that football field, too.
How about them Tigers, they're six and oh now.
That's okay, they'll be coming, wait a minute, that's good, but they'll be coming to you to pay for a bus when they go to the semifinals or whatever it is.
We'll do that one, Mayor.
Well, when they go to, to the district, no, semifinals, they'll want a bus, and if they go to state, they'll want a bus, that's the way it always happens.
Yeah, but it's, that's accomplishment, it is.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I'm just...
That's a small drop in the bucket.
Yeah, compared to thirty-four million dollars.
Okay.
People that was worth twenty years ago, my class, my senior class, or the last class to beat Central, and...
Oh, tonight's, tomorrow night's going to be the Nike there.
And tomorrow night, if they don't beat them, then I guess that's our last year playing, too.
Yes, so yours was the last one twenty years ago?
They're going to say he don't know if he wants them to be or not, because he wants to be the last one.
I want to beat.
Mayor, just got a question on the part there. Um, you've made comments in regards to the raises and such...
Do you want them beat?
Um, which we were not aware of, or anything of that nature there, even as far as with the secretary's raise, if it was done properly and such, I wouldn't have an issue with any of that, at all. I'm not against anybody in this city getting a pay raise and such, and, I mean, it is a hardship on them now at that point, too, as far as paying money back, that wasn't approved properly and this, that, and the other, and I, I, I just have a real serious problem with that, because a couple of them is a substantial amount of money.
Well, that's your cut, though, you, you guys set...
We have, we haven't cut anything.
Well, you will on the police and the fire, because you guys set that.
We didn't set this order.
No. Oh, well, this is...
Right, for this year.
This is, this is their normal stuff.
Right.
Okay.
But they're getting paid above that now.
Yes.
But, I mean, we didn't cut anything.
Well, the secretary, I give her a raise, going in because she's working for two people. I told you guys, my Camilla's doing it.
Well, I mean, I, as far as going on there, but, I mean, it's like the council doesn't have any say-so in anything that's going on as far as in that part, and if we would have been approached to the part, and more than likely, would have been worked out.
I told you some starters going to do it.
Well, I mean, it wasn't done properly, though, as far as the appropriation for it.
If they make appropriations, we should pass it.
After the five?
I told you it's up front when we come in, I was going to do that. I was up front with you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, you did say that, that what Doug is saying, you just didn't go through the proper procedure to do it.
If they bring it back, appropriation, will you pass it?
I think now, at this point, we're just going to let it be negotiated.
Is there any, is there any, go ahead, Jane, I'm sorry.
I just think, at this point, we should let the salary increases and the wage increases be negotiated for two thirteen.
Well, she belongs to you, and she'll probably file a grievance.
I don't see what kind of a grievance she has.
She has got a grievance.
Is there any other, um, merit raises that have been made that we're not aware of?
No. She's the only one. I told you about the Johnson, I was going to bring him up, put him in the union. I was up front with you on all this.
Well, I mean, at our council meeting, you get, you, um, stated that you would let the merit raises as far as in the police department, and that's...
We didn't know at the time, I couldn't do that, now we know. So you guys can put anything you want on them, that's up to yous.
And, you know, like I said, I'm not against that, as far as just, you know, that amount of money that's being paid, and now it's a hardship on two, well, three of them.
I told, I told them to find it in their budgets, and they did.
Right, I think he's talking about, they've already been paying her, and paid money.
Yeah. Right, Doug?
Mm-hmm.
There was...
And, I mean, it's, now, the question is for us to jack, how would you find salary money from your budgets?
The police department was told, in order to get those raises, they had to find money in their budget, and they did. Places where they could take it, and it would, we would have to move it, you know, and bring it to you guys. But there were, there, but they found places, and then we'd have to do the same thing with, with the mayor's secretary.
But in line items and such, isn't there a thing, you can't take from certain line items?
Well, not without, not without doing, um, a transfer and ordinance, which has to come before you guys.
But how, I mean, you said they've already been getting it, and that's never come before us, so how...
Well, at the time I did, we did it, I didn't know the mayor couldn't do it.
Neither one.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I thought you said it has to be...
I know what you're saying, but...
Was there any way we can fix this?
Mayor, I move that we direct our council attorney to prepare and file a petition on behalf of the council president pursuant to IC thirty-six dash four dash four dash five, posing the following question, does the mayor or the council determine the salaries of the city employees? And two, is the clerk treasurer required to supply council members with immediate access to records in her custody without regard to the Access to Public Records Act?
I've already been there.
I'll second that.
What's your ordinance read now?
Doug, I've already talked to public access.
Okay, well, I mean, as far as records, as far as getting things straightened out here, as far as with our, uh, with the...
So there's no question.
Mr. Reedy, as far as different things that way, I mean, if Umba, or whatever their name is, has to come in to do something so that we can get things on track and, and help, I mean, I know, you, you guys over there in your office are buried with, with paperwork and what have you on the part there.
Yeah.
But the thing about it is, is I got emails here from different ones, that the three, basically three amigos are the ones who've done all this problem and such, we're just trying to get...
Now, we, okay, I want you to know that we sent May-June paperwork to Mr. Reedy's office over a month ago, and they're still requesting May-June.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Teresa does that, I, I...
Well, I mean, as far as on our part, you have, what's their name, Umba?
Umba.
Umba.
Yeah.
You have them, as far as, and if they would come in and basically get things on, you know, to catch up, to help you all out, that would be great.
I, like I said, though, I just got a bill from them...
I...
For seventy-five hundred dollars. Okay.
Doug, what was your motion, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
You want to go over it one more time?
I want to move, we, uh, we direct our council attorney to prepare and file a petition on behalf of the, uh, council president pursuant to the IC code thirty-six dash four dash four dash five, posing the following questions, one, does the mayor or the council determine the salaries of city employees? And two, is this, the clerk treasurer required to supply council members with immediate access to records in her custody without regard to the access to public records?
Doug, the answer is no, I went to public access on that.
As far as, I'd have to come in and sign if it's in regards to a council?
No, no, if you called tomorrow and said you want something, and I have other requests on, on my poll over there, they go in the order, because I asked him that.
Okay.
No.
The poll is set, what that is, it go, you do negotiations, and you come back with a contract, board works close on the contract, it comes back to you guys appropriate, that's how that works. You have another discussion.
We've got a motion and a second on this.
I hear you.
I don't, I don't understand what, who you petition, who you petition. I don't understand who you petition.
I don't have the statute in front of me.
He wants Nick Kyle to do a petition on his behalf, right, Doug?
To who?
Judge, court.
To the court.
What court, public access?
The Deere Warren County Court, and let them rule, so there's no question on who can do what.
I just got the, uh...
Well, obviously, we all have a different opinion of it.
I, I think, I mean, Jackie said she called, and...
I'm on first-name basis with Mr. Hoag.
But just like the raises, the mayor's saying he can do this raise, we're saying he can't, let's find out once and for all, who's right and who can do what, so then there's no question.
There always is such appropriation of the raises.
But we had, that hasn't been the case, though, Joe, as far as the raises and such, I mean, it's, it's a hardship that we didn't create on some people here in this city that are employees. It was just done.
And what's the question to me?
Well, I'm just answering your, what you said, as far as appropriate, I mean, if it was done in a proper manner or such assistance, I mean, that's doing it the right way.
So my question to you is, why didn't you counsel the mayor and let him know that?
Why didn't I counsel the mayor of what?
And let him know that he couldn't give raises until we appropriated the money.
I don't think he and I even talked about it, frankly.
I just feel like the, the money that Nick Kyle's going to charge to come down here and do the court case is going to be less than the raises, I mean...
I mean, more.
I mean, it's a, more than a raise, it's, I mean, it's a good idea in theory, but, I mean, it's going to cost more money in the long run.
Why, why don't we just, to, to settle, why don't we just agree here that if, if anyone's going to get any raises, that we all, we all bring it in front of everybody?
Bring it back and have proof of it.
In that way, you know, everyone's got knowledge of it, um, you know, go that way, instead of spending money, we'll all be involved, you know, there'll be no question of, you know, who's giving the what.
Well, like, one thing, I mean, he's talking about his, his secretary, that he can give this raise, okay? If I'm wrong, then so be it, I want to know for sure that I'm wrong. And if he's right, you know, let him know he's right, but here's the problem, and he's saying she's going to file a grievance. I don't, I mean, I would not think, no matter how many grievances you file, the union can't override, override the law.
The union can't override the law, but, um, if we can agree to, you know, appropriate the money from, for everybody, then we can avoid all this court stuff, because no matter how much, no matter how much the secretary's getting paid, I mean, I don't know if you're going to dispute it, but Nick Kyle's going to charge more than that, that raise to come down here and do all this court fighting and legal paperwork.
Yeah, but what's not to say we're not going to get in it on something else, and something else, and something else?
Let's just let it go this time, Ian.
If you let it go this...
I think what you're asking for, Mike, is declaratory judgment, is that what you're calling by?
I don't know what you're calling, I'm not a attorney, I want to...
Basically, yes.
And all that is declaratory judgment on that issue.
Right. This, and here's...
For the raises.
On, on that...
And then you say, well, this is going to settle from, on the other things, it's not.
No, just about raises.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it?
But why don't you guys just agree on everything, you, you guys have to appropriate the money for raises, there's no question about it.
Well, why, why are we discussing this then?
Look, if you're going to take the mayor to the woodshed, if that's what you're...
I'm not taking anybody to the woodshed, I'm just saying that...
You know what I'm tired of, Joe, I'm getting tired of being walked on and treated like a redheaded stepchild that don't know what he's talking about, and yet, have I seen anywhere that I've been proven wrong?
And why don't you counsel our mayor?
That's why I want to do it, and when there's a motion and a second, and I'm asking for a vote.
You're getting a vote. Well, what if we just do this, save the money to the attorneys, just, before I do it, I'll kind of get appropriations from you?
Uh, there's a motion and a second, I would just ask for a vote.
I've lost it here.
Mayor, from the beginning, I've always had great respect for you, and I told you that you need to be protected.
Uh, mayor comments, now, over one second.
Question, on one of the ordinances here that Jackie has, there's, uh, there's a twenty thousand dollars difference in...
Grant?
I didn't say that, but...
Well, mayor's assistant.
Okay.
Well, that's an error on my part, do you know how many ordinance I have?
No, no, I'm not, I'm just asking, actually, I'm not blaming anybody.
No, 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 okay, I'm just telling you, do you know how many, you know, how many ordinance that I put together last week?
Many, many.
Okay. And I put the wrong figure on it, and I corrected it. The ones you got tonight should have the eighty thousand dollars.
It's just going to cost them more money.
So what?
I mean, we, if we get it fixed, we're talking about...
Okay, well, I'm just trying to find out where I am here. Um...
I'm tired of it. Jackie, on your, as far as it's, you had the three ordinances here, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and it's on sixteen here.
But then I made you a new copy of sixteen, honey, there should be. I, I've got a new copy of sixteen.
And I didn't get it then.
Here. I had a new copy, there.
Well, I mean, this is what is in my pack, that's why I'm asking that question.
And I, you might have gotten one that was inadvertently had a wrong number on it. Well, I mean, I tried to get everything out to you, no?
I mean, I'm not wanting to tick you off, make you upset or anything, I'm just asking the legitimate questions, and I've got, you know, the two here.
And, yeah, the one was wrong, and it probably got in your, in the envelope by mistake. You can throw that one away.
After we get done with this motion, I got a question.
We have a motion and a second.
Vote.
We vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Jane?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Wait a minute, Bill Bill? Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Doug, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes is how, okay.
What's your question?
This right here, that was just added tonight, is this, is, can you see what I've, I've got here?
Yeah.
Is this where...
No, those are, those are things to do with that ordinance eighteen, two thousand and eleven, that are under a general line, they're, they're not a specific job in there. You look through eighteen, two thousand and eleven, you'll see, um...
So these are different than what's in the eighteen, two thousand and eleven?
No, no, those are in the two thousand and eleven, those are just, um, a breakdown of some instances, um, of who gets what. They're in, they're in the two thousand and eleven, eighteen, two thousand and eleven. But some of them have a general title, like clerical A, or office this, or court this, and it doesn't really give you a big description, so I tried to make it easier to understand by typing up that list.
Because they're not in here like that?
They're in there, they're not in there under their name. They're in there under a more general thing.
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, that's why I did that.
And I have one other thing to say. Joe, another reason, just like I said, getting treated like a redheaded stepchild.
You don't have red hair.
My mom does, huh?
Oh, okay.
Oh. I'm asking two different meetings about grants, if they have to come back before council for final approval. Both those meetings, you said no, even Nick Kyle was at one of the meetings, disagreed, said the state statute. Monday night at the redevelopment, he said the same thing, then afterwards, I told you I was going to challenge you on it. And you said, why? I prepared an ordinance for you guys to pass, so it doesn't have to. I would suggest to start saying, you prepare ordinance for us to vote on, because it always seems to me like you're trying to tell me what I have to do, and I don't appreciate it. I've been walked on long enough, I've tried to be nice to this point, and, and, and I can't take it anymore.
Any more comments, or?
I got one comment, Mayor, why don't you return my calls or my texts?
I don't text.
Answer that one. You don't return my calls either, I've tried.
I don't have them on my phone.
Do you, I'm just going to put this out there.
Call my secretary, I'll...
Do you call his secretary or his cell?
We need to start communicating again, we need to all work together.
We'll see. I don't know. Call my secretary, you get a hold of me, that's the best way to get a hold of me.
I call your cell or I call your direct line, Bill?
I, I make the phone calls back, I might not make them at that minute, but I'll go through them a certain part of the day, and I make the phone calls back, I haven't seen one, huh? Best way to get a hold of me is through the secretary.
Okay. And, and I'm telling about the announcement about Fall Fest stage, when we're supposed to be there.
Oh, Marie asked, um, thanks for reminding me, I got so worked up over this. Marie asked me to, uh, tell the council members, and the, the primary mayor probably knows, that, um, if you could be at the stage Friday at a little bit before seven, or, and Saturday, between six and seven, she is going to announce city council, if you guys would like to go. Especially you, Mike.
I'll have to say, I won't be available with such short notice, because the tow shows in Mason that I have to go to, and I have a meeting tomorrow that, I don't know if I'll be back by seven.
Any more for this board?
Yeah, I got a, um, just a question, it is, just curious, are, are we, I guess the big picture, are we looking at even considering helping the school, or are we just going to kind of point them in a different direction? I'm just curious.
I, I don't think I would rule out, you're looking at me, I don't think I would rule out a hundred percent of not helping them, but I know that there's state and federal grant money out there available, and I know that they're not maintaining the buildings the way they should be maintained, and I know that's because they haven't got the money for the maintenance, the custodial crew, they've cut AIDS and everything else, but take a look at Greendale Middle School, I don't know how many years it old it is, it's not that old, and LPS, brand-new building, structures that are more or less pole barns in my mind, compared to Lawrenceburg High School, as a solid structure, and already the wear and tear on those two new buildings. So to give them money to tear down a good structure, to build a new structure that might not be maintained, I, 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 I won't be a part of that.
What kind...
Why put money, if they neglected already, why give them more money to neglect that?
But I'm just saying, I've heard so many different scenarios, like a rehab, you know, I haven't heard, you know, tearing it down, but I've heard rehab, um, you know, different areas, things like that.
What, what area of the gym is it that it's slipping?
It's the south wall.
That whole, the whole wall?
The whole, the whole structure, the orange structure, it's tilted in that way.
They wanted to condemn it, they didn't even know if they was going to be able to use it this year.
How do you feel, Bill Bill?
Well, I mean, personally, I mean, I know we've, we've given them, you know, a lot of money over the years, and I know a large percentage of our tax money goes to the school systems, but, uh, I think we've got some, some other people, other entities that may be able to help out, so I think if we could get a group, a group effort going on, I think, uh, you know, I would be, I would definitely listen, but I think, uh, we need to get some more players in the, in the game.
I don't think we should foot the bill.
I, I mean, I'm not saying, when they come and ask for thirty-some million dollars, that's, that's a different story, but...
I mean, I wouldn't be for helping the kids, I mean, but, I'm not for paying for them at school, you know, but...
The gymnasium part, we may have to probably help them on, but that's, that's going to fall out.
Which I think the best thing they could do, like I said, build a gym separate, which the other schools could use, too, for activities.
That's what they got.
And then, you know, then, when that's done, rehab the old gym and make more classrooms, and then the gym for regular class.
I think you can tear that building down, I think that building's going to be sound enough.
Well, but, I mean, they can build a new section out there, right?
The bad thing is, I don't think you're going to be able to build back on it, because the, the ground's not suitable to hold the building.
So they can't do anything to it?
I don't believe we're attached, you know, because it, what, on the side where the football field is, that's where the pilings go pretty deep.
Mm-hmm.
It's not too far from the aquifer, and that's what's sinking, it's like quicksand. It just, in those days, when they do a spread footer, on those days, the technology is a lot different than what it is nowadays. It's just, the building's not going to hold.
But if they went deeper with, um...
You can't go in that aquifer.
You get in, okay, that's what my question was.
You want to stay out of it anyway, because it's costly. Any more? Entertainer motion, John?
So moved.[1743.98]